All right, we're going to call to order the February 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Successor Agency and the Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Mr. Vincent Villegas. All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the Central Valley water supply that the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation is the other party, and to confer with our legal counsel, I'm sorry, to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the West Sacramento Police Managers Association and the West Sacramento Police Officers Association. All right, so with that, we'll proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from taking action or having a significant discussion on items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the city clerks is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. And also in front of the clerks is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which item is currently being considered. The clerk accepts the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item, except for 1A, since there is no staff report. Once the staff report is complete and the council questions and the public testimony have begun, she doesn't take any additional cards, so if you're here to speak on a specific agenda item, then please be sure to get your card in before the end of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public isn't their thing and can cause anxiety and hives and other medical conditions, so we do ask there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations, then we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have one request to speak on Item 1A, and it's by Forrest Gardens.
Hello, thank you.
Is this on?
Yes. Okay. I was told to read this into the record and attach the notes that I put in to the agenda, if I can. You know, if you see something, say something. That's kind of a motto that I've been hearing a lot lately. And I'd like, and I wouldn't have to take this up to your level, but I tried to reach out to the city and I wasn't able to get any response, so this is my only way of getting this through. I asked the city of the West Sacramento Foundation and the program Future Ready, the mayor's trust for youth, and the reimbursable account containing $257,000 through the Home Run Initiative. The city stated that I can take notes during the call, but a written reply was impossible. If you check out West Sac Connect Ticket 726-4027, you'll see the inquiry marked "Complete" with "No Answer." My attempts to contact the West Sacramento Foundation and Future Ready were unsuccessful. I asked the foundation and Future Ready for their IRS 990, which is supposed to be available to the public about their programs, and disclose the staff and their salaries. All requests were ignored. It's virtually impossible to follow the money once our tax dollars hits this nonprofit. It appears Future Ready was its own entity, but when the grants dried up, it slid under the foundation where it was infused with funds from our city. I started turning over rocks like any community advocate and gumshoe investigative reporter would do when red flags started popping up. It appears Future Ready and Launch Path are a double play that stalled second base from the Home Run program. It appears you and the mayor made a pitch to the township about improving educational and career opportunities for youth, having their solutions in the dugout and hitting a financial line drive through the West Sacramento Foundation straight to Future Ready. Future Ready was created by the mayor and is partnered with the office of the mayor and is the chairman of its steering committee. The program touts its ability to coordinate a group of dizzying interns that create websites, improve social media presence, and online visibility. However, their own website is slumped and their Facebook page hasn't posted in over a year. The 4,000 paid followers are not naturally quiet and mention a Future Ready or its executive director is strangely absent on the West Sacramento Foundation's website. The link to Future Ready is buried deep in the city's site. No mailing address, no phone number, no fax number, no federal tax ID, no donation link, but there is a 75 Dinner Sign-Up to Dine with Dignitaries and Elected Officials to a link that also doesn't work. One staff member that coordinates the fundraisers, but there aren't any, and any get involved bike ride signups, that's hosted by another separate nonprofit, that link doesn't work either. What makes it difficult is that there seems to be a reimbursable contract for $42,000 for Future Ready that's also through Capital Impact, which I believe you're a partner of, and I'm concerned that the city used public funds to get a license for Launch Path, which you helped co-create.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gardens. That's the only request we have under Item 1A, so before we proceed to Item 1B, I just want to, just for the council and the public, Mr. Gardens also filed a complaint with all of those facts with the Fair Political Practice Commission of California, and the commission determined within two weeks that there was no basis to any of the complaints or charges, so the complaint's been dismissed by the independent commission that doesn't work for the city at all. So that brings us to Item 1B, which is Council of Communications. Are there any reports or communications this evening? Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city-county two-by-two committee met on January 22nd, 2020, at 12:00 p.m. Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Bab Sandin and myself represented the city, and Supervisors Gary Sandy and Oscar Villegas represented the county of Yolo County. We discussed and received the Yolo County 2020 to '24 strategic plan. That plan, by the request of Mayor Protem Sandin, was distributed to the council members and the city, and if you haven't received it, I'm sure it's forthcoming. In addition, there was also, I hear an echo here, there was also a proposal for medical dental vehicle. It looks like Sutter Health and Dignity Health had provided a grant for this amenity of $600,000 each, and that's to provide a metal dental vehicle, which is essentially a vehicle that would go and provide mobile immunizations in places like rural migrant areas, schools, shelters, and other outdoor areas that aren't getting a high level of care. So it's a really cool, innovative idea. They're looking for a provider currently. In addition, we also talked about the proposed animal shelter JPA. Our city manager, Aaron Laurel, has a copy of the proposal and is reviewing it, and we then will decide how it is that we want to participate, and that would be to plan operations model between all interested cities that want to become involved in the animal services facility. In addition, we also met the same day for regional sanitation. We did an election of chair and vice chair. We elected Director Sue Frost as our chair and Vice Chair is Carrie Howell. There was a lengthy discussion throughout the meeting about the approval of an agreement of a new singular wireless telecommunications permit and communications facility at the American River Parkway. Ultimately, this resulted in a substitute motion, and it was dropped from agenda and action was taken. We also received the Echo Water Project quarterly report for October 1st, 2019, through the December 31st, 2019 timeframe, and an update on the bio solids management plan.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Guerrero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yolo Habitat Conservancy Board convened, convened on January 27th, and in that meeting, we accepted the Independent Senators' Report, the State Controllers' Report, and the mid-year budget report. In the mid-year budget report, the Executive Director, Mr. Brazil, raised a finance finding where administration expenses this year are not being reimbursed through existing revenue sources and wanted to have us take a look and prepare when we address the 2021 budget on what alternatives we can seek to make sure that we are financially viable for administrative expenses. We also approved the 2021 budget process and organizational goals, and we authorized the Executive Director to execute a contract with PJME for a station upgraded project. And we received a memo recommending additional inclusion of the Yolo HP NCP. We also gave the Executive Director authority to enter into a contract with the Triangle Properties to plant at least 800 elderberry seedlings. And we also approved an amendment to special participating entities which contain an implementation policy of the Yolo Habitat regarding supplemental charges to the special entities who are seeking to take authorization. In addition, the board awarded Supervisor Provenza the Burrowing Owl Award, and Supervisor Saylor was selected as the new chair, and I was selected as the new vice chair. In addition, the League of Cities Sacramento Valley Board convened on a conference call on February 10th, and we prepared for a site visit in Reading and Paradise, so those dates are coming up, and we will also take a look at innovating housing solutions to rebuild in Paradise, since they've, you know, had a massive fire and they're doing some things very rapidly, and I think it's a good opportunity to take a look at some models to build quickly. In addition, the Rural Working Group will convene and have their first conference call Thursday, March 19th, to discuss what their priorities will be to collaborate with the League of Cities. And that concludes my report.
All right. Good luck on the future Burrowing Owl Award yourself.
I can get one of those.
Councilmember Ledesma?
I'm a little bitter I can get one of those.
I know. I wondered about that.
I have a few things to report on. First, back on, it seems like a long time ago, but the 28th of January, there's a brief meeting of the countywide, excuse me, countywide successor agency, successor oversight board, if you guys remember that. It's a once-a-year meeting that we have in Woodland of representatives from various taxing agencies, and how the continued wind down of the successor oversight board or wind down of the agencies continues. So we approved a number of plans, ROPS plans given by Winters, Davis, and West Sacramento was involved as well, and Woodland. So again, we continue that work on an annual basis, so we're not meeting as often as we did as the local successor agency board, but that process continues. So all those plans, I think it was Davis that actually had their final plan reviewed and done, so I think they are now complete. On February 3rd, there's a meeting of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, and a number of issues were talked about on that agenda, including, excuse me, including reviewing some foundational principles and an update and strategies around equity, which were part of InScope for this commission, to make sure we looked at populations and areas and neighborhoods, to make sure that there was an equity lens as we look at climate solutions and resiliency solutions across our two cities. But the most kind of pressing thing we did focus on was the recommendations from the Community Health and Resilience, Resiliency TAC, Technical Advisory Commission, and they had three recommendations that were accepted by the commission. One was around expanding green infrastructure to all neighborhoods throughout the city, as well as increasing green infrastructure and food security. Those are the three recommendations were around. All three were, again, to really, and that particular strategy was to address how communities cope with the effects of climate change, including things, the last one around food strategies, food distribution strategies, really what one was aimed at going local, which I think we already adopt, sort of by our food hub. We source a lot of food, we have a lot of food infrastructure in West Sacramento, so it kind of fit nicely to what we already do. So it was a helpful meeting, and we have started, I think I mentioned this, at one of our meetings, we had our strategic planning session was around, we should be targeting May to have the final recommendations in place that the commission will continue to work on. So anyway, that's the meeting of the Climate Commission on February 10th. Thank you. We had a meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District. A couple of things of note in a little preview. First of all, we approved a resolution to join with Caltrans on a bid for infra funds. Their focus area, one of their focus areas at Caltrans in this district is around I-80 and the corridor from Salano County into Sacramento through West Sacramento. And as everybody in this room is probably is well aware, it's not much fun to be on I-80 coming across the Causeway from it and about the edge of Salano County as you enter Davis and into, pass the Causeway into West Sacramento. Caltrans is working on funding opportunities using infra funds as their first attempt to get a grant to help try to find ways to have managed lanes, and you want to ask whether managed lanes, they could be any number of things, including HOV lanes, lanes that could be shared for transit bus issues, which is one that district is interested in, as well as possible toll lanes and other uses, using as much of that existing infrastructure highway to expand the capacity through I-80. So I bring that up because here on the 28th of February, I think that's right, Thursday is a workshop that Caltrans will be having, it's open to the public, that they will start to show some of their possible solutions that they'll be going for, so the public is invited to that to come see sort of what Caltrans is considering. YCTD joined as one of the agencies that will be sponsoring the grant proposal, so hopefully we can get those funds and being able to make some headway, at least some progress on I-80. So again, that's hopeful news. I'll stay optimistic as long as I can to get those grant funds through, but I'm glad YCTD was able to step in and be a sponsor of that, because it's so important to everybody in Yolo County. So again, keep an eye on that. But the big item we talked about there was the comprehensive operation analysis, and the data was finally released to the public before the meeting presentation by the consultant that worked on this on behalf of the district. So again, this was a comprehensive look at all the routes, all the ridership from a point in time, a couple of points in time of riding the bus network, and with the goal of looking to streamline routes, to look for where there's opportunities to increase ridership and to make it the most effective, efficient route it can be. So the consultants ended months of work, a little too long for my liking, but they got it done, but they were able to come up with a plan, or at least some findings that kind of validated things we already sort of assumed, some underperforming routes here in West Sacramento, but some routes that are really worth exploring. This council gave the feedback to YCTD, and as I have on that board, is frequency is important, having bus ride routes that come more often, the more predictable times, more consistently, is important. That was shared through the other cities as well, and so several recommendations were forwarded. I think most notable were trying to get the 42A and 42B, which is the real spine of the transit issue coming in from around Woodland through downtown, through West Sac, and clockwise and counterclockwise. It also makes up our airport service out of downtown. Trying to get that to 30-minute frequencies was one of their goals, from an hour, so that's a good, that's a good step in the right direction. They're looking at streamlining and shorting routing in downtown Sacramento, which they observed, as I've written in recent months, some terms that are kind of questionable in nature, why are we going this way when West Sac is that way? But again, I think they observed that, too. And then looking at some possible routes in West Sacramento that may be worth working with the city, whether we can streamline, those are 35, 39, and 241. A few of those do work really well, some of them have low ridership. So again, my urging to the, while the consultant and staff kind of wrapping up their work, I think the board made it clear that this is just the beginning of the work. So there's lots of outreach planned, they plan to come back to this council to kind of go through some of the plans and work with the other jurisdictions and do some outreach to the public. I also urge the staff to make sure they're working with our staff, and Sarah was there, so thank you, Sarah, for being at that meeting, to make sure they work on our staff so that we can leverage our existing assets and do better coordination, especially with VIA, which has been a success on our end, providing transit services on the micro-transit level, having better leverage what we know and learned about VIA with the bus routes, as well as with Jump, both as bike and scooter stations better placed, might be able to make things more efficient and better be able to manage that first and last mile issue we have with getting routes. So again, it's just, I consider that meeting a launch path, not a landing pad, to where we're going, so a lot more discussion to come there. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on January 16th. We heard an update on the floodplain restoration project and approved a contract amendment to provide site support and advanced mitigation. We also were informed that we received an Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure envisioned platinum rating for the South Port Levy Improvement Project for long-term operative sustainability and floodplain restoration habitat functions, and I noticed right before I left my house to come to City Hall that we had front-page coverage on that in today's West Sac News Ledger, so you can check that out. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on January 23rd for its strategic planning session, and we focused on succession planning, and our executive director informed us that he'll be stepping down the end of this year, and we also looked at our niche, which is small development, neighborhood rehabilitation, and low and moderate income housing. Valley Clean Energy met on February 13th, and the board heard updates on the strategic planning process and timing, and an update on the power charge and indifference adjustments and energy resource recovery accounts. The board was also updated on the progress of SAICOG Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Grant Implementation Progress for those members of VCE. We, I believe, have a separate grant. And earlier tonight, the Port Commission met, and we approved a subdivision improvement agreement for the northwest quadrant of the Seaway property, and we approved a harvest and purchase agreement for dredge spoils material from navigation-loving property west of the Ship Channel, and we approved two-year lease agreements for a storage yard project for River City Rowing Club and the Lake Washington Sailing Club. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to report on RD 900? RD 900 also met earlier tonight. We accepted the 2019 audit and financial statements, and we heard a number of updates on projects in the district.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I have a couple of reports. The Sacramento Area Council of Governments Board has met, I think, twice since our last council meeting, other than the special meeting, with a major meeting with the governor's key team on environmental sustainability and the climate piece. So the director of OPR, who is also the governor's sustainability czar, I think, she came to the SAICOG Board along with a couple of her colleagues, because as councilors are aware, we're trying to meet this 19% commitment on greenhouse gas reductions, while also grappling with our regional housing need allocations, with West Sacramento having an allocation of, an expectation that we're going to grow by about 10,000 units over the next 10 years. 10,000 units is 25,000 people, plus or minus 5,000 people, so it's not a trivial amount of growth. The conversations in the Capitol about SB 50 that came to a head during, since our last meeting as well. So a lot of conflicting pressures at state government regarding the future of development and community building and the environment here in our own city. So they came, she and her colleagues came to try to reconcile some of that work, and we had a good conversation about the need in the Central Valley, and particularly in cities like ours, to focus a little less on zoning, a little more on financing and other tools that would help us deliver the units that are already zoned. There's a big difference between the Mission District of San Francisco and West Sacramento or Rancho Cordova or other cities in the valley where zoning isn't the principal limitation. So we discussed a lot of those issues with her. She was also quite familiar, I was surprised, with our West Sacramento On Demand with VIA project and a huge fan. And so I asked her, that's terrific, it would really be helpful for us if, number one, it counted as transit for purposes of the Transit Development Act, we're able to fund it today as, sort of as an experimental project, but on a permanent basis, we need to change in order to make that explicit, that on-demand rideshare counts, and then second, that we need the administration and the legislature to deal with the fact that most of the incentive programs for affordable housing, for mixed-use development, for sustainable development, all depend on access to high-quality transit, but high-quality transit is defined as a stop, you know, a light rail stop or a bus stop with 15-minute headways or half-hour headways in some cases, and those grant programs and cap-and-trade algorithms don't really account for other forms of transit that do not have a fixed stop. So just as we have migrated from bike share being only at a particular station to transit doing the same, you know, in this particular instance, this is a key area for us. So she committed to work both with us and with SAICOG and the legislative delegation to change that, so an encouraging set of conversations at the SAICOG Board at that point. The other thing I would note is that we're, SAICOG's moving very heavily into the congestion pricing, managed lanes issues, for all the reasons that Councilmember Ledesma said, but also it's a control measure in our air quality plan. So there's been a lot of discussion happening over the last several years, but we're at the point now where real, some real toll roads or highways or other congestion pricing pilots are going to have to come online in the region, and, you know, if there's a new bridge built, it wouldn't be surprising if there were some, an insistence that that also be a toll bridge as well. So I, I was also, I'm the new chair of the Transportation Committee at SAICOG, so I'll play some role in how this shapes up, but just to flag that congestion pricing is definitely going to be on the agenda in the coming months as we implement the new MTP that was just adopted. We also did, West Sacramento was also featured two weeks ago by the Sacramento Clean Tech Forum at the California Fuel Cell Partnership, asked us to come and present on our work on innovative, on innovations in mobility and how to innovate in mobility, with VIA and Jump and many of our other local projects being featured there. Similarly, I met with Secretary Kim, the Secretary of Transportation for the governor, last week on two topics. One was the next stages on the streetcar slash light rail extension project that we've been working on and that has the state cap-and-trade grant of $30 million, and so needed to brief him on that work. He remained supportive of the project. We are not at risk in the, you know, at the moment of the money disappearing, and he understands the, he's from the federal government originally, understands what we're, how we're proceeding forward with that project, so that was positive news, and then made the same pitch to him about some of the legal changes around VIA, which he's also supportive of. Also spoke at Verdi Exchange, which is a Los Angeles-based form of environmental and social justice and development and SB 50-supportive developers in Los Angeles about, who are interested in West Sacramento's growth and sustainability trajectory and our record on the homeless count and on gentrification issues and others as a model for how they build out the rest of Los Angeles County, but also got some affordable housing developers who may be interested in building up here that haven't up to this, up to this date. We hosted a call last week through the U.S. Conference of Mayors with the Director of the Centers for Disease Control about the role that cities are and can play in coronavirus outbreak, and so we forwarded some of the information from that call, some of the discussion that we had with the director around what some cities are doing that is not particularly effective and things that cities can be, and so both at the city level and then in conjunction with Yolo County, making sure that we're taking the appropriate actions to emphasize we don't have, there are no cases in Yolo County or in West Sacramento, but this is about the broader question, the broader issues about the systems that are in place, the protections, the backstops and what have you. So we're working to implement the advice that the CDC is putting out. Three weeks ago, the New Deal Leaders of the U.S., which is a group of state legislators and mayors and governors and county supervisors and other local officials, created a new National Committee on Education Policy, looking to take education policy into the 21st century and to deal with some of the issues around the future of work and automation, and just for the councils, just as an FYI, I'm going to be chairing that committee along with Senator Elena Parent from the state of Georgia, but we expect our recommendations within the next six months, but we'll be focusing on and building off the work that we've been doing here in the Home Run and our career pathways and on preschool and a lot of other issues that we're, that the city is pretty well-known on nationally, to try to build a national agenda that would then inform Congress and the next administration around federal policies that would support city innovations like we've been undertaking. And then finally, the U.S. Conference of Mayors had our, we held our winter meeting at the, three weeks ago. West Sacramento was the winner of the Dollar Wise Award for our Home Run program with a particular emphasis on our digital badging efforts for teenagers and the work that's underway there. Comes with a small, a very small grant of dollars to support and accelerate that work, but it's but it's competitive program nationally, and it was a good honor to see the home run being celebrated yet again for the sort of nation-leading innovation to serve and make West Sacramento the best place to grow up and to raise a family. We were also asked to present on a couple panels about VIA and about the future of the workforce and what cities can do, given our example here. And then, the last session at that, there was a small meeting with the White House around, the White House staff, or I, just to be clear, there was also a meeting, the mayors all went, well, some of the mayors went to the White House. I declined to participate in that meeting this year, but we had a separate, smaller meeting about immigration policy and trying to find some common areas where mayors, governors, and members of Congress and the administration might agree on a set of policies that would come along with DACA extension and a range of other issues as well. It was a not-failure meeting, but I don't want to, I don't want to overstate my, at least my optimism about where we'll get with it, but it's important to keep that dialogue going so that, exploit any opportunity to try and move forward on the most vulnerable populations, including those in our city. So, that's my report. I did have one appointment to propose under item 1C, and that is to the, I'm sorry, two of them. One is to the Public Finance Authority for the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. We'd like to appoint Crystal Matter. Crystal is a member of the Economic Development and Housing Commission, so she would be taking the seat that was vacated by Mr. McGowan when he moved over to the Port Commission. And for the Board of Appeals, to appoint the current alternate to that board, Rob Gunn, as the regular member of the board. So, those would be the two appointments, Rob Gunn to the Board of Appeals and Crystal Matter to the Public Financing Authority. So, is there a...
Second.
Motion.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma to approve those appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Appointments are approved. That brings us to item 2 through 13, which is the Consent Agenda. And do we have any memos from you, Mr. City Manager, other than the item that was previously, it was item nine which had already been pulled?
Right, nothing tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, are there questions or comments or items to remove off consent?
I have a question on seven.
I have a question on five.
I have a question, two and six.
Okay. Start with number two, then, is consideration of acceptance of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and related documents for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Ms. Guerrero?
Yes. You're okay. Thank you, sorry, Roberta. Thank you so much for coming up and answering the questions. I have a question on page, sorry, there are a couple of pages here. I'll start off with page 175, and related to property tax, general revenues and other changes in net positions. I think it's just the numbers of, from fiscal year 2010 to fiscal year 2019, there's just like a huge discrepancy. I was looking at, just comparing it to the others. Can you explain that to me? There is, fiscal year 2010 is a lot higher and fiscal year 2019, if you can just provide a little background on that for me for the property taxes.
That could be because of the redevelopment agency.
I see. Okay.
And then, when we switch to successor agency, then it's in proprietary funds, so it's listed in separate, in a different section.
It's listed in a separate section?
Yes, you see, the successor agency starts from 2013.
Okay. Roberta, did you want to provide additional feedback?
I have the things in front of me, so I'm going to look at...
Oh, here.
And this is all...
The property taxes, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, the big difference there.
And 2013, that's when we, the successor agency...
It dropped at that point, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, yes, with the dissolution of redevelopment, a lot of the, you know, the amounts are no longer going to the redevelopment agencies. Instead, they're put into a trust at the county, the tax increment amounts that would previously go to redevelopment agency, only the amount that is required to pay your required obligation approved, required obligation payment schedule are then provided to the successor agency. The rest are passed through to the other taxing entities, and we get a very large share of the pass-through.
That's the ROPS, and it's in the fiduciary section.
Oh, it is. Okay, great, great, thank you. And I'll follow up with you on that. And then, also on page 178, I was looking at the expenditures and over years, 2010 to 2019, I was looking that, you know, on the top general government, you know, and then down to public safety, you know, there was just a little variance under public safety, whereas others, you know, there was, well, it was a lot higher in 2010 for Public Works, and it went down for Public Works to 2019. Public Safety went up very, very small amount. Could you give me a little background on expenditures in these areas, on how this works?
Because you mean the, under Public Works, what's the variances or...
Yeah, I just, yeah, exactly, but like just the differences between Public Works and Public Safety.
Oh, Public Safety, just the fire and the police. That's strictly just fire and police expenses.
So, there's not a huge increase over those, that period of time?
Um...
And then, there's just a major decrease over the period of time for Public Works?
Public Works Fund is including, well, we might have the reclassification of some funds in between.
I see, oh, okay, that makes sense.
Because Public Works has a lot of small funds, but instead of fire and police, mainly are in general funds.
Yeah.
Happy to, we're going back many years now on some details. If you'd like a better answer on what has changed, we can certainly get that to you outside the meeting.
Okay.
I don't know that anyone's prepared to answer the details.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you. I would like to have that information. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Item five, it's consideration of Resolution 20-18 approving a budget amendment for the replacement of police vehicles. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi.
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
I noticed that we were budgeting for a couple of Crown Vics, and I, I know that a lot of agencies are phasing out that car. Am I incorrect? I'm sorry, I'm looking, I apologize, but I saw on the headshot. I just, I'm trying to understand if that's correct or not.
Yeah, as I read the report, I could see where that came in. All of those vehicles are now the police interceptors, which are an SUV model. So, yeah, we weren't, we aren't going to have any sedans, that's not actually available anymore.
Okay. So, the budget, what vehicles are we purchasing then? All SUVs?
So, it would be, for patrol, it'd be the five interceptors.
Okay. Have we considered the possibility of looking into some of the hybrid options that are out?
For the patrol vehicles, we have not. I think as we look forward and we entertain more of the replacement cycle that the citywide effort will undertake, I think that's something we will definitely look at, especially for some of the other deployments. I don't know that there's anything available right now in the traditional patrol operations type of model.
Are they all interceptors or...
There's different models by different makers, but that is the one that we have chosen at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, I saw that there was a utility hybrid, but in any case, that would be fantastic to look into that for future purchases, only because of the direction that we're taking with the city and, you know, our fantastic department leading the way in that effort. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Item six is consideration of Resolution 20-16 certifying the final initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring plan for the state streets infrastructure projects, adoption of budget, Resolution 2017, and award of construction contract of Southwest Pipeline and Trenchless Corporation for the state streets sewer rehabilitation project and other related items. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. Hi. Just a few questions regarding the selection of the bidder here, Southwest Pipeline and Trenchless Corp., and what we went through and some of the questions I received about this particular bidder, and just the background work that you've provided to, you know, determine that, you know, the integrity of the ability to get, to be in compliance with labor laws, and then moving forward, the oversight. Just wanted to find out a little bit about whether or not, you know, they're going to be able to comply. Can you provide some background? I think you have some of that information already.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As identified in the staff report, we are a general law city, therefore, we have to bid our construction projects consistent with public contract code, and we're obligated to award to lowest responsive, responsible bidder. Thank you for bringing this particular contractor to our attention. We have an internal process in place, and we intend to make sure, and actually have project manager Amber Wallace here, we'll make sure that there's adequate oversight, that this contractor is paying prevailing wages, and, you know, they're going to meet all the requirements for apprenticeships, and, you know, definitely we'll keep a close watch on this contractor.
Okay, thank you. And who is going to be doing the oversight? Is, I see there's an amount here, is it going to be in-house or are we going to contract that out?
Well, Amber is going to be our project manager, so we will definitely need some assistance during construction. Typically, we go to our on-call list for construction, and we would hire somebody with assistance for labor compliance, where we verify their certified payrolls on a regular basis.
Okay, good. And then, their ability to comply with apprenticeship requirements, who does apprentice, who will be doing their apprenticeship work?
Again, that requirement does not kick in until after award. It's actually, they have to comply within a certain amount of days after the work starts. Typically, the consultant we hire for labor compliance will actually do all the work to ensure that they are meeting those requirements. Because this particular contractor was brought to our attention, some of the things that we normally do after award, we actually started already.
Okay.
And we verify that this contractor already registered with DIR.
Okay. Okay. With DIR, you said?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item seven is...
I actually have a question.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Roscoe.
Just a comment. Thank you. I just want to commend staff for the agenda report. I had a chance to actually read the entire thing, and I appreciate the efforts to minimize tree removal. That's, I know that's really important, not only, especially in the state streets. I mean, we're known for those beautiful shade trees that have been there long before the city incorporated. In addition, I'd like to show my respect and appreciation for the minimization of traffic impacts in that area. I mean, everybody wants the roads and this infrastructure to be fixed, and of course, that also comes along with complaints of, you know, congestion or whatnot. As that work is being done, I appreciate the attention to that. In addition, this is an area, I know that Councilmember Ledesma and I voiced our concerns back in 2016 and 17 about just walking the state streets, and I know ultimately, we're talking about the sidewalk repair down the road, but this area of the city, along with many others, but this area has been neglected as far as attention for very long. And so, it's wonderful to see this proposal on the table, and I appreciate, and I know I can speak on behalf of many people who live in that area that could express their gratitude to those who vote in favor of this item. So, appreciate your efforts.
All right, thank you. Then, we'll move to item seven, which is consideration and award of contract affair to FAR Construction Corporation DBA Resource Development for the Oak Street Interior/Exterior Tank Recoding Project, and consideration of Resolution 20-14 approving a budget appropriation for fiscal year 2019-20. Councilmember, I'm Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you. I don't have a question particularly about the project, because I, it's clear that this needs to move forward. My question, though, is about the amount that it's off from the original estimate from the water master plan consultant, and I suppose I have, I know that that's a little dated, because it was five years ago when that was completed, but because there are other projects also being contemplated, and the difference is more than half million dollars from the original, I'm curious about what else might be coming. Do we need to have an escalator or some other, something else built into things that are coming to us? Should we be concerned about this? Basically, my question.
Yeah, so, what we've done as we've gone back, as we mentioned in the staff report, we believe that what the consultant did was just really looked at the tank and not the other, the other factors, the additional containment for the neighborhood to keep the dust and overspray out of the neighborhood. So, it looks like they were missing some factors. Internally, we're also looking at just really updating some of these, these real old estimates, and, you know, they were kind of shelved for quite a while, and so, it's time to revisit those as we move forward. We looked at other projects in the region, and it was consistent. Some of it is increases in the coating products, and then, we also required a pretty high-quality control, but that's to ensure we have a top-quality product, that we don't have to go back in five years or 10 years or something and fix...
And there was a reference in the resolution about the rationale being labor, labor costs, and is that consistent with that five-year period of time since the recommendation?
Yes, there has been some increases in regards to labor as well. So, it's a combination of factors. Probably, like I mentioned initially, probably the biggest was just some of the factors that the consultant didn't consider with the close proximity to the neighborhood and those impacts.
Is that throughout the whole, in your estimation, throughout all of the recommendations that are going to be coming forward? Will they be similar to this? This much of a delta off? I'm just worried about, I worry about how we end up being able to afford everything we want to do and where the funding's coming from, so that's what I'm trying to get at. And not, again, not that this project should be stopped and we need to do this, but I just, looking in the crystal ball, looking forward, like, are there other concerns?
Not that we've seen. In relation to some of the other coating projects, I think we have two other tanks that are close behind this one, so we'll definitely take these factors into that and get these updated estimates and look at that, but in general, our other projects have been...
Coming in.
Coming in pretty close, you know, with a reasonable factor, much more reasonable. This was kind of a one-off with the special systems and, like I said, the safety around the neighborhood, so...
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you. You got lucky, Amber just saved you $2 million, so we're not really going to do it on this. All right, so that's all the questions on the Consent Agenda. Seeing no further discussion, is there a motion on the Consent Agenda? I'll move the recommended action. All right, it was moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item 14, which is public hearing and consideration of Resolution 20-3 approving changes to the city's book of fees for tobacco permits. Mr. Paper?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a pretty simple and straightforward report, I think. The first reading of the ordinance to limit flavored tobacco products and potentially contract with the county for enforcement was read on December 11th. The second reading and the adoption of the agreement with the county for enforcement were approved on January 15th, and the ordinance actually went into effect last Friday, February 14th. Excuse me, this is just a required follow-up action. What we would have typically done is just struck the reference to tobacco permits from our book of fees. The agreement that was adopted with the county for enforcement actually had a requirement that our city council adopt fees, the county's fees for the enforcement. So, what we're doing, we're required to hold a public hearing for this, but we have struck all of the existing language in the book of fees and simply added a reference to the county's fee schedule. So, we need to hold a public hearing for that. I'm happy to answer any other questions, if you have any.
All right, are there any questions? This is just an implementing action from the six other public hearings we've found of this item, so let me open the public hearing on this one. We don't have any requests to speak, but it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on item 14? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn to the council, any further questions or discussion or motion?
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Roscoe and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item 15, which is Presentation and Discussion on the Mayor's Commission on Election Integrity's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Deuce, are you leading this off?
Yes, just a brief introduction of the item. This is intended to facilitate council discussion of the... This is intended to facilitate council discussion of the recommendations that have been issued by the mayor's special commission on election integrity. Jaclyn Powell is here, in her role as the chair of the commission, provide a brief summary of their findings, and open it up to any questions for her. So with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Powell.
Good evening. As Doug mentioned, my name is Jaclyn Powell, and I am a resident of West Sacramento, and the prior board chair of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. I am also the prior moderator of the candidates' forums in West Sacramento over the last decade. In 2019, Mayor Cobaldin asked that I chair a commission on campaign integrity, and in order to allow residents to take a fresh look at campaign laws in the city, and come up with independent recommendations to improve the process. And so, in 2019, that's what we did. A wonderful group of residents, which included a retired government employee, our retired city clerk, political science professor, IT professional, and state employee, got together and volunteered their time away from their families to talk about campaign laws. Since the recommendations are already reflected in the materials you have tonight, I thought it might be helpful to tell you a little bit about the process, and how we came to propose the recommendations reflected. The commission met five times, all times on Friday nights, and discussed campaign laws and public policy. Initially, we literally reviewed the current municipal code, state laws, and federal laws in order to become more familiar with the campaign regulations. From there, we broke into subcommittees, and we had one group dedicated to campaign contribution limits, the bump in our local municipal code, and independent expenditures. We had another subcommittee dedicated to looking at cybersecurity, transparency, IT, and social media's rolling campaigns. And the final group is dedicated to looking at violations and enforcement. So in between meetings, the subcommittees would meet and research, and read books and articles, and speak to experts. In particular, the violations and enforcement subcommittee met with the district attorney's office. The district attorney's office let the committee know that in the last election cycle, their office received the most resident complaints out of the city of West Sacramento compared to any other city that they have in their jurisdiction. The results of that meeting, and everyone else's research and analysis, was brought back to the commission. The information was compiled, and from there, the commission developed topics and proposals that ultimately we would take to the public for their feedback. The final meeting was a public meeting. We had about 10 people in attendance at the meeting, and in response to the topics we solicited feedback on, not a lot of substantive feedback was provided, but a couple of points did come through in that meeting. One being that the people in attendance generally felt that campaign issues and violations tend to just work themselves out, and that limited changes needed to be made in that respect. The second is that there is a significant concern in the city of West Sacramento about the impact money has in our local elections. With respect to the violations and enforcement, the commission ultimately determined that something needs to be done in an effort to take control of and curb the chaotic nature of the election season. There is a compelling need for real-time enforcement and real-time consequences for intentional violations of the code, whether it is as simple as a sign violation, or a campaign contribution violation. The commission felt violation should be given an opportunity to be cured, but ones that were not cured, or could not be cured, needed to be promptly addressed during the election season as quickly as possible, and perhaps monetary fines attached to give people greater incentive to comply. With respect to spending and independent expenditures, while our recommendations are also included in the materials provided, and I'm happy to answer questions on those topics. As you consider our recommendations, I'd like to stress the importance of the work that was done, but also the need for further public comment on this agenda item. I'll close my comments by acknowledging the commitment and the talents of the committee members, some of which are here tonight. These citizen volunteers gave their time and efforts in the hope of making a difference for a city that they love.
Jaclyn, would you mind introducing your colleagues as well, that are present?
Sure. We have Jean Castillo, Jake Jablonski, and Rafael Chavez.
All right, thank you very much. So this is a presentation and discussion. We do have requests for public comment as well, but are there questions for Jaclyn or her colleagues at this point?
I can reserve my questions for later.
I do have, I do have a couple of questions about the formation. I know you were selected by the mayor, but thereafter, I saw there was a public process, a vetting process, not a vetting, actually, an application process. And then from there, I became aware of a meeting. What happened in between, so that I am familiar with the process?
The process in selecting the commission members?
Yes, what happened, like, how did that process happen?
The commission members were selected by the mayor.
All of them, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A public announcement was made, and applications, we got quite a few applications for the commission, and we reviewed the applications to try to craft, because this is a commission that's, the commission is not, the commission was advisory directly to me, and then to determine whether or not to bring it to the council at my initiative. And so the intention was to compose a commission of local citizen volunteers who had a variety of these background kinds of skills in the law, and in political science, and in innovation and technology, and in enforcement, and some of these other domains, in order to get some fresh eyes from folks who were, in particular, folks who were not involved in, you know, in the traditional campaigns and other candidate campaigns in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions?
You know, I do have a question. I don't know, Jackie, thank you, by the way, for coming up and for taking this charge, and for presenting tonight. I had a question, and I don't know who can answer it, but I always wondered about the increase in contribution limits when a candidate self-deposits that $2,500 amount. I mean, do you know anything about the history, about why it is that that even existed in the first place?
So we asked a question on that particular topic, and just to give, that was part of our process. The commission would meet and ultimately create, you know, questions that we would ask city staff. It's my understanding that the background behind the initial bump may have been originally that when a candidate spent $2,500 on their own campaign, that the bump was extended to the other candidates, possibly not them. But now, the way the law exists today, once that spending limit is reached, all candidates get to enjoy the benefit, I guess, of the increase to the $500 spending or contribution limit. So that was what we think was the initial intent of the code, potentially, as it existed previously. I don't know, can we ask questions of the city attorney?
Sure, I was here too, when we did this. The original campaign finance ordinance that was adopted in the early, mid, early 90s, shortly after the city incorporated, a few years after the city incorporated, simulated a $250 limit, period. There was no secondary limit or what have you. And the issue of wealthy candidates financing their own campaigns came up, and there was interest in applying that same limit. City attorney came back to the council and said, you can't do that under the Constitution. The right to expend their own resources on their behalf to speak in an election can't be abridged by an ordinance. But what you could do, or maybe a council member was asked, and he didn't object, so the purpose was, the solution was to have this $500 trigger that would apply to all other candidates, to say, okay, you can spend $10,000, or $100,000, or $1 million if you want to, but then to try to disincentivize that, and also to level the playing field slightly. The other candidates will then have the ability to accept larger contributions as a result, so that they are not constrained as much by the fact that you have decided to spend all of your personal wealth on a campaign. A few years later, after a series of other court decisions, the city attorney returned to the council and said, turns out, that's also, that's going too far. And so if you're going to have this trigger, then it needs to apply to all candidates. And that's how, so that's how we ended up with the $250 limitation that moves to $500 for all candidates, if any of the candidates spend more than 10 times the limit, or $2,500 on their own campaign.
Yeah, that's essentially correct. I'm honored or not of having drafted every one of your campaign contribution ordinances and amendments. So yeah, that's essentially right. We started off with a 250 limit. There was concern about self-financing, a level playing field, so the bump was introduced. There were some developments in case law to suggest that that would be seen by a court as being a discriminatory practice to only allow some candidates to accept larger contributions. And so that was the ultimate result, was everyone got bumped when anyone spent a certain amount of their own money.
Well, we had this discussion back when, right after incorporation, about 250, and then the self-financing folks, but I mean, if we lifted it to $500, is essentially that same argument still available for those who want to self-finance?
Yeah, and they still could. I mean, under this, under what the commission's proposed, and the way our ordinances are today.
Right. Significant research was conducted around the bump. It's not a common thing for cities to have in local municipal codes, but the concern was that it created likely an additional burden on staff, because they'd have to obviously notify the other candidates when the bump is reached. And in addition, there was just the potential for abuse, as far as delayed reporting of, you know, hitting the bump or initiating the bump. And so the commission reached the conclusion that they thought the bump should be removed.
Yeah. I think there was also some evidence it wasn't really effective. There were still candidates spending $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 from their own accounts, their own bank accounts, when everyone else was limited to $250. So it was, having that challenge, and then there were a couple of curious situations where candidates would intentionally spend, spend $2,500 or more of their own money, for the purpose of triggering an increase in the contribution limits for all candidates, including themselves. So it was a well-intentioned, like so many campaign contribution rules, was well-intentioned and thought out carefully, and as often the case, it had unintended consequences, and folks found ways around it.
But in this case,
They might abuse it, yeah.
The cap would be $500, even if a candidate self-funds, that gives them their own $500, that they're capped at their own personal contribution to themselves?
That's the recommendation.
Okay.
Other questions?
I do have a question regarding your conversation with the DA about the reports. Did they give any statistics as to what exactly the report was?
Um.
Just a lot of phone calls, I heard.
Yeah, it wasn't, I couldn't recite to the exact number. The general feedback that they gave was similar to the recommendations that we came up with, that a lot were just innocent violations that could be cured with a simple letter from their office, and it's my understanding they sent quite a few. But, again, it was just the overwhelming response that there is a lot coming out of West Sacramento during election years, and it kind of confirmed the commission's feeling that election years in West Sacramento are generally chaotic. And so it helped to provide guidance, at least, on that issue. And so to the extent, I guess, the commission thought that there was a way to curb some of the minor, more minor issues that were being directed to the DA's office by creating, like, an infraction system or other things like that, that's where that recommendation comes from, just to kind of curb some of, a lot of the notices that they're getting at their office.
So the process to do that would be to have the city send a notification, or, so the code enforcement officer, or, so before it heads over to the DA's office, to have our local, whatever process in place that we establish to curb that?
Some form of process, right. There's certainly cities that have created independent bodies, based on our research, that actually take this on at a city level, like hearing officers and other things. We thought that that created a potential conflict of interest issue, for someone to be paid by city staff, and having care of violations of candidates. And so, kind of the middle ground was that, you know, it's essentially an infraction system that's sort of like a ticket, a speeding ticket, that gets sent to the traffic court, that they would essentially just hear as a violation, for instance, a sign being posted in an unlawful area, things like that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I think, I wasn't aware of the DA situation at that level. It's consistent with what I had heard from the Fair Political Practices Commission as well. We get a lot, we've been getting, in probably the last two cycles, an extraordinary number of complaints, sort of violation filings at the commission, 99% of which they dispose of at some point, without, and determine that they're not, there's nothing to take action on, there's no viable case there. But they've never been able to explain why it's more now than it was, say, five years ago, or why it's more than similarly situated cities with the same demographics. But I know it's been a frustration all around, because then the complaints get filed, just as they do with the DA, and nothing happens for six months, nine months, at all. And to some extent, the complaint process itself has been heavily weaponized. I think that was the technical term that the investigator there said, was that we have, we've had the emergence of a culture of weaponizing the complaint filing process in order to harass, or to occupy folks during the campaign. So it's been an interesting phenomenon. So the commission's thinking and recommendations around how to routinize, and how to take some of that stuff out of that process, I thought was really, really interesting. Appreciate the thought that's gone into your work. All right, so we're going to move to public comment. Before we do that, I just, I want to say thank you very much, Jaclyn, to you and to your colleagues on the commission. This must have sounded much more prestigious than it was, in the sense that, you know, when you work on issues that are about elections and about politics, people get fiery and engaged. And in some sense, it's the best of our city. Sometimes it's the underbelly of it, but it is definitely a sign of a lively democracy in the city. But the public engagement part of the process starts tonight. That's what this is about. Because all that's occurred to this point is recommendations that you've been working on, or to forward to me, as an individual, and then bringing them here to the council. But the amount of care that you and your colleagues have put into this work, the amount of time, the amount of research, and the amount of careful thinking about the trade-offs, and the unintended consequences, and the hearts of people, you know, and the good intentions of so many people that are just trying to run for office for the first time, and they didn't know there was a Caltrans right-of-way that they accidentally put their sign into, while also having a system that, you know, catches people who are trying to abuse the system, and rig it for their own benefit. To try to balance those issues, it was clear that your commission colleagues, and you really thought carefully about what the systems and the incentives were around that. So we'll have, you know, an extended discussion here, and hopefully, you know, I'm supportive of moving forward with these recommendations to the next stage as well. But regardless of the content and the details and the specific recommendations, just really, really grateful for the service that you've done for the community and your colleagues too. This was not something that the council could just take up on our own, even with the best of intentions, even if we locked ourselves in a room away from anyone else for days, and tried to just be objective, you know, monks on a mountain doing, it's impossible. We were all part of it, just like everyone else, and so to have a set of independent, but skilled citizens who care, but aren't part of the fray, who are willing to devote the time and the energy, even with all the crossfire, is something extraordinary. It's one of the great things about this community, but it wouldn't be possible without you. So please, thank you to all of you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so we have a few requests to speak on this. First is by Danny Langford, and she'll be followed by Pat Flinch.
First, I'd like to say my comments do not reflect anything on the committee. I think they all did a great job. I think that they were above-board people. It was concerning, though, when it took practically an act of Congress to find out who was on the commission. Even people that applied had trouble. They weren't able to get public records requests about the information as to when the meetings were, and who was on the committee or commission, let alone when the committee or commission meetings were being held. They're open to public meeting laws. When you call it a commission or committee, it's supposed to be open meeting laws. So the Brown Act should have been covered, as far as this meeting stuff went. The one meeting that was allowed to the community, like she said, there were about 10 of us there, and it was the week before Thanksgiving, so it was inconvenient. I know a lot of people that wanted to attend that couldn't, because it was the week before We all voiced in not raising the contribution limit, because we're all concerned that it's becoming about money. And that money could be used so many other places in this community, such as in our schools, and for the homeless, or whatever, if you want to raise money. We also recommended that no punitive measures for sign violations, as that does work itself out. And honestly, Mr. Mayor, you had a sign that as of right before Christmas was still in the field across from Arlington Oaks, which is probably still there on the ground, but the grass is growing up because it's spring, so it's probably still there. So how would that be handled? I have a huge concern about violations being dumped on our traffic division to police when they already have such a busy workload. How is the city staff going to oversee conflicts, or, I'm sorry, oversee violations and not have it be a conflict? Also, how can the city negate the vote to remove someone from office for a violation? Wasn't this commission, why, I'm sorry, why wasn't this commission listed on the website as a commission, like all the other commissions are? You've called it that several times tonight, so it's a commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Pat Flint, and Pat will be followed by Forest Gardens.
May 2nd, 2019, at the state of the city, the mayor announced the formation of a special mayor's commission on election integrity. Whether it's a commission or a committee has never been really identified until tonight. It's on your transmitter, and Mr. Mayor, you've said it several times. If this was indeed a commission, it must have been followed by different rules, because a commission is, as all the other commissions are, and under the Robert Rules of Order. How many applications were received? I understand you and I don't get along. We have a conflict between how you run the government and how I'd like to see it run. So I understand why my application was not accepted, but there were many applications from people, longstanding citizens, that qualified to be on this commission. And I'm sorry to say not one of them was chosen by our mayor. And if this truly was a commission, the open meeting laws were violated. Regarding enforcement, the city and city staff should remain neutral. There is too much room for conflict of interest. The federal government, Yellow County, the state of California, already have rules and regulations and laws in place that must be followed for campaign laws. As for the local law being adopted that requires removing from office, laws are already in place. Again, you, the council, should not be the judge and jury. It should be law enforcement from the county, the state, or the federal government. If this was truly a commission, then the recommendation in front of you tonight should be null and void. It definitely did not follow the ethics that you're trying to present here. Due to the process and meeting laws were not followed, this should not go forward. I agree, this commission is a great commission, and it should be treated as a commission and allowed to function as a commission. I will say the commissioners are very nice, they are responsive to the public, well-educated. My comments do not reflect at all on them, although they didn't really listen, I guess. They did what they were asked to do, but you put them in a precarious situation without clear direction, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Forest Gardens, who'll be followed by Vincent Viegas.
I forgot, let me speak on this topic tonight. So the ton of us that did participate in the mayor's election integrity commission didn't have anything substantive to bring to the meeting. We were there for almost two hours, going over every single thing that this commission meeting had to offer, and we were exchanging thoughts and ideas. And not a single one of them were adopted. Actually, and the opposite. We said we want to lower campaign contributions because we didn't want big money to get involved in these elections. And what happened? They bumped it up to 500, just across the board. Now they're going to be doing an enforcement division and taking some of the authority or sharing some of the enforcement from the DA. Again, like what Pat said, the city traffic division already has their, you know, they're up to their necks already with the pothole issues and things like that. I mean, we're going to add one more thing. So everything about this integrity commission just stinks because you called for all of these applications, you handpicked them, and then now they're going to be coming up through recommendations, and then through you, it's going to come to the board here to vote. This whole commission thing should be dissolved. It should, the applications, at the very least, should have come up, and then you guys should have all looked them over in a room, or even tonight at a board meeting or whatnot. I don't know how you guys would do it fairly, but at least get input from different board members, so that's not just the mayor making this unilateral decision, if that's how I understand this process worked. It denied each of you folks the opportunity to look at the integrity commission and have your own input. It denied each of you guys that opportunity. He seized the whole thing and ran with it. It's just disgusting. And the other part that's just disgusting is the mayor taking, accepting building permits, or the city taking building permits and maxing out his campaign donations at the same time. I mean, what kind of integrity is that? If I'm going to be building a 500-point apartment complex, it seems really fishy that they're going to be handing you 1,500 bucks at the same time they're going to be turning in a building permit to the city. It's just, let's talk about integrity, let's just bring that up. So yeah, they were the two FPPC complaints that I had a chance to bring up, and unfortunately, I didn't have enough evidence in order to stick it to you. But there's going to be some more close calls that are coming up, and I hope your chair has a seatbelt, because you're going to need it.
All right, thank you. Vincent Viegas.
My name is Vince Viegas. I'm a lifelong resident of West Sacramento. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm asking that the council not double the amount of individual contributions from 250 to 500 dollars. I think that, like, the one wrong from like the Supreme Court decision to have candidates spend unlimited funds doesn't mean that we should be increasing the amount of individual contributions. I think increasing it exacerbates the influence of large donors and shrinks the voices of small donors in the city. And just keeping that in mind, like, a quarter of WestAC households make $25,000 or less, so they can't compete in donating to like 500 dollars into a campaign. I think we need to be moving in the opposite direction and decreasing contribution limits. I think WestAC itself is still a really small city, and we need to keep the healthy relationships that we have between the residents and elected officials and to really build on that. I think also that by having a smaller contribution amount, it really allows to have people more involved in the political process. And it also kind of gives a mindset and creates a culture of having policymakers run their campaigns on issues that really matter to residents of West Sacramento. I think also that, like I said, like, this isn't anything against like the election commission. I think it just really speaks to the integrity of our campaign finance system as a city by having smaller contribution limits. I honestly think it should be less than 250 dollars. And I think there are also a lot of other great options to really combating this issue of campaign finance. Like I said, one of the ones I mentioned earlier is decreasing the individual contribution limit, or you could look at other options of like publicly financing elections. There's other election systems, like election vouchers in other cities. And I would definitely be more than willing to like meet with more like council members or other people in the commission to talk about like different solutions. I understand that this is the first time that like more residents are being able to talk about this issue, but I think it's a really important one that we have to think really hard about in terms of keeping people, you know, residents engaged in the political process and really making sure that their voices are heard. So yeah, I would just like to thank you for your time and just keep this in mind in terms of when this comes to a vote.
All right, thank you. And so those are all the cards we had on the item, and I want to thank folks for coming to testify. Just to, so we're clear about the structure of the commission. The commission was, it's actually stolen the internet, the commission had a wide public recruitment and application process, and then the commissioners were publicly announced as well by the city, both on the site and on social media. The commission is not a Brown Act commission. It's, the commission's actually identical in its form and structure to the Blue Ribbon Commission on Education Excellence that was chaired by Wes Spears, and to the post-redevelopment options for West Sacramento Commission that was chaired by Councilmember Ledesma and other citizens. So this is the normal process that our commissions have used in the space for these sort of special topics. So having said that, let's open it up to further discussions, because the question tonight is to whether or not we want to proceed, we're not being asked to vote on a final set of recommendations tonight, not in the least, but whether we wanted to proceed with all or some of these items for consideration in a future meeting. Councilmember Gruehr.
Mr. Mayor, and fellow councilmembers, I appreciate the comments, public comments. And in listening to them, you know, I can feel, you know, what the public felt here was not being included in being able to contribute to the process. And even when they tried and they don't see their recommendations on paper, I honestly don't think I could take a look at this as a comprehensive report. And I appreciate what your recommendations were today and coming forward and providing what those recommendations are. I'd be willing to meet with anybody to continue to hear out what other thoughts are out there. I unfortunately was on a cruise when, I think that week before Thanksgiving, so I couldn't attend the meeting to listen to the process. But I think it is important, the transparency, this is an integrity and recommendation. And I think transparency, for me, that's what I ran on for government and process and decisions that council makes is extremely important and continue to embrace that and want to be able to take a look at recommendations. I don't know if the FPPC was, you know, consulted when these recommendations were provided. Sacramento City has some transparency that is going on, on what is posted on their website for contributions. That's a good model that I think is helpful for us to know what contributions are being made. And also, you know, taking a look at what Mr. Viegas described here as alternatives to financial contributions and taking a look at what we can do so that we level the playing field even more for people who live here on a lower income, but also willing to participate in our civic, you know, participation here in West Sacramento. I think a lot of us have a lot of pride in what we do here, and we cannot, you know, contribute financially on our own, but we want to be able to participate equally. And I think that's important for all those individuals as we look forward to future elections to see what we can accomplish doing that. So just with that, I have some hesitancy in adopting or, you know, just saying, these are our only set of recommendations. I'd like for us to revisit and open it up even further, or even continue to allow the Election Integrity Commission, and also, you know, have a more transparent process on putting down, even if it's not a Brown Act, I think it'll be helpful for people to have more opportunities in the future to open it up and continue the discussion and not take this as our final, you know, act on what we can decide here today.
All right. Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks, Jacqueline, and all the members, I'm not sure if they're all still here, but thank you for all your work and for volunteering your time and participating in the meetings, going beyond that, doing your own research, visiting with our officials at the district attorney's office, and your questions to your probably staff who have a long history with our ordinances here. I just want to say thank you, first of all, for your service to the city and providing your recommendations to us. And I know, having chaired the commission task force we had, is that 10 years ago? Almost 10 years ago. It's, you're asking, we ask a lot of residents to participate in those commissions, and it takes the time from work, it takes time from families, and, but people who are generally earnest and wanting to do something for their community, it comes out with thoughtful recommendations and knowing that not everybody's going to agree with them, it's part of the job, so nobody told you about that part too, but it's, that's the reality of it. So, so thank you. And usually, good things do come of those efforts. And I know the one I chaired nine years ago resulted in some of the work we're still able to do through post-recession times of being able to further our economic development work here through our formation of the EIFD and Measure G and all the things we've been able to do to fund infrastructure. So it does, it will, you'll hopefully have a result, an outcome, that you won't be able to see right tonight, because we're not, obviously, the process is, while it's your landing pad tonight, you're presenting what your thoughts are, it's a launchpad for us. And I think that's the part of the process that I would just urge the public to understand is that no decisions are being made tonight. These are your thoughts based on your research. So thank you for that. And this is when we pick up the ball or not, and what we want to move forward with or not. And it has no effect on your personal work, it has no effect on what your thoughts are, it's just our decision based on how we gather feedback and can make the right decision that's best for the city. So thank you for, again, for your efforts. So I do think it's, you know, and thinking about having been in four elections now and experiencing them through in the off-years on running ballot measures, or which I did for one or two of them. It's, and I think the part that I just want to take a step back around, I think, was what you were trying to get at, which was maybe tamping down or trying to get some control of the chaos is kind of what I heard is a theme in this. I kind of view a little bit of that, because when you're in it, running, you certainly feel that chaos. But it is also, you step back from campaigns, they're difficult things. They really are. And I think you're getting to that, because part of my question, and I don't know if you're taking questions, but I'll pose them anyway, you don't have to get up, Jacqueline, yet, but it is around the consideration of state and federal laws that also guide us in these election processes quite a bit and provide even more requirements on candidates than what's thought. So I totally understand the dynamic presented around maybe lowering the threshold. But since my first campaign in 2006 to the one I did a year and a half ago, whenever that was, costs and the demands and the requirements of a campaign have changed dramatically. The reporting requirements have changed. It's more frequent now, as Chris and her staff will tell you. It's, the demands on a campaign are very impactful to the candidate, to their ability to try to stay in compliance of reporting deadlines. And as a result, I ran my first one, I had my best friend, who's barely my best friend anymore, running as my treasurer. Man, I'm kidding, he still is my best friend, oldest best friend. But it's complicated. It's to keep up with the reporting requirements, to being able to, when things are due, when do you report them, especially now in the last 30 days of a cycle, you have to stay on top of it or face some of the ramifications from it. And an industry that I got to know was just the treasurer's office, which we, I think, most candidates will contract with now to help provide the service, creates a built-in expense for a campaign to get it done right. And I think, I think of the person who is, you know, trying to launch a campaign, if I did this again, and I don't know if I could do it again in my 2006 state without a professional contract with, and trying to raise money, trying to get somebody to give a contribution of 250 at that time was daunting, and it's still daunting every time you go ask family and friends to do that. And most of the time, they can't. But you accept what you can and you move on and you try to find that. And my point is, is that it has gotten very difficult to run a campaign for just the average person in the city. And I'm not quite sure 500 dollars is right. I know it is absolutely confusing every year that I've ran that when the 500 threshold is triggered. It's a mystery who triggered it, it's a mystery when they triggered it, and all those weeks that you may be out there raising money, getting a 250 dollar check from your parents who are living on a fixed income or whatever. are living on a fixed income or whatever, and then to go back at them, you know, you have to go back at those relatives or whatever, maybe ask for more because somebody else triggered it, that's a real thing and it's difficult and puts the candidate in a very awkward position of, I gotta go back and call those same 10 people, whatever you were lucky to get, to get the max of 250. I got, and, and, and so I just try to like, the totality of kind of how campaigns are run and the impact on the individual running and their, their ability to run is something I'm thinking about as I consider these recommendations because I'm hoping that the ease of use of a campaign system was a consideration here, like it's just easier to understand and navigate a little bit. It's kind of why I liked sort of the, what you guys proposed in, around your, how you, the enforcement, because everybody makes a mistake. I had a sign left out past the time, I think in my 2006 campaign, just forgot it was out in one part of the city and I got a call, hey, it's out there, it's past the time and I ran out there, dropped everything, get it down and those honest mistakes happen and versus automatically escalating to, you know, some, God forbid, if it went to a DEA. So, you know, I think that's where I'm trying to think of this, how we think of these, any ordinances we change, is their ability to help, I guess from ease of use perspective from the person who's coming to, wants to be, sit up here on some other body and be able to say, I can run, I get where we're going, the rules are pretty clear and, and so that's where I'm kind of thinking of the $500, those are rare to get, you know, you're lucky to get them, but they're also, it's an up to, so we, you do try to get as, what you can from as broad a array of people as you can. It's, for me, that's not the issue, I want the people that want to run to have the ability to because to do it right, sometimes that expense can be pretty high and I think that's, you want to, you want to have a flyer, you want to mail it, you want to have signs, you want to have all those things and I think, I think that's something that I'm, I'm thinking about too. I also want to think, I agree kind of with this sentiment about, or I should say, I am concerned about the impact of public, to our public services as well and, and I think about the impact this has had on our outgoing terrific city clerk who's ran elections very well since I've been doing this the last few years and she's just ran, been a great resource for us and when I see it, what we do or the way that ordinance is set up confusing her, her cotton, I don't like that situation either for them, to where they got in force or they got to answer questions that are somewhat nebulous about kind of when things are here. So I'm hoping some of this can address that and provide clarity to that process. Again, again, what I'm hopeful for is that, again, that clarity, that ease of use helps folks get to, to make more opportunities for people to run and not be overrun by the kind of negativity that come with the enforcement or not knowing the rules and I think, hopefully, I think most of them do, I think they kind of common sense sort of way to kind of flatten it, make it easy to use, it kind of gets to that, that, that thing that I was looking for. So I appreciate that and I, again, I kind of look at, I'm not going into every part of it, but sort of the theme you guys went on in terms of providing a common set of rules and guidelines that don't fluctuate based on triggers that nobody can see is an important part. So just want to say thank you for your recommendations, I look forward to kind of the discussion we'll have now from going forward about what's right, what's wrong for the city going forward, but just want to say again, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. I also want to thank the entire commission for your thoughtful analysis of the current processes. You know, there have to be repercussions for those who intentionally violate campaign rules and the public may not know about it, but there are people who are benefiting from these violations and their penalty might be that they win an election. And so, you know, coming from the perspective, I mean, I'm hearing the comments regarding, oh, we'll have the DA prosecute these Azusvist demeanors or whatnot and, and I'll tell you, it's a new day and age for the district attorney's offices, okay, with pricey lawsuits and multiple Public Record Act requests on anything from the community, which is, I mean, it's great that we have them, but there is, there are a lot of requests and those requests are very expensive, that even in Sacramento County, and I can speak for district attorney's offices around the state, where we are in a crisis, we cannot hire new district attorneys, we are not prosecuting certain cases and with the recent change in criminal justice reform, you know, Prop 47 realignment, we are not prosecuting felony, former felony cases. So now the community is upset because we don't have a response to their home getting burglarized or someone just stole a TV out of Walmart and Walmart can't do anything because it was under $950, which is a threshold to trigger a felony when it used to be a lot less. So what I'm talking about here is, I can't imagine going to the Yolla County DA and saying, hey, we got some lawn signs that are out of place, that just seems preposterous. So, I mean, I don't find it that out of the question to find another body to look into this. I do agree that it should be independent and so with that, I, I just head off of that because it just seems easy to kick the can, but at the same time, without the perspective and lens from that, that body, it just, it just doesn't make sense. So with respect to the recommendations, I'm, I really like what I see here, I think that increase in the contribution limits to me was just innately and inherently unfair. If anything, I thought, well, how does this make it equal? Because, and I know in the 2016 election, the campaign was well underway with a couple of candidates that were raising at 250 until, until it wasn't and it benefited, it was a direct benefit to another, it was used as a, as a tool to, that I don't think it was anticipated for. And the other thing is that, you know, I don't know how it really, well, we all know that it didn't really achieve its purpose, so I appreciate getting rid of that. I do actually find, I mean, when I first saw the recommendation for 500, I said, yeah, okay, I can see that because ultimately it's hard to raise money and you want to go out there and, you know, I know other places they don't have limits and you think, well, 500, that's just not a lot of money. But I do find it persuasive, some of the testimony about equalizing the playing field and making sure that this type of process is accessible to the normal West Sacramento rank and file, I mean, that's, that's who I sit at the ball field with, that's who I'm hanging out with, or all of us rather, I mean, West Sacramento is a working-class town and not everybody, I can't imagine approaching my friends and saying, hey, you got $500. Frankly, I don't know what I would say to somebody who was asking me for $500 and it happens, right? And you, you do what you can, but it, I'm not offended by a lower amount, in fact, I kind of invite the idea, even if it means more work for some of us who may be seeking reelection. That said, I do agree with the recommendations regarding the limitations being constant, excuse me, and actually, I don't, I don't know what the penalty is for violations and I know that we're not there yet, we're not here to adopt anything yet, but I kind of, there has to be some type of, well, I liked the idea of having some type of information posted on the city's website or somebody's website to really reveal when violations are occurring because I think that that could be something that would dissuade folks from just, you know, rampant violations. I don't know if it's a photograph of the candidate's picture and the violation itself, whatever that becomes, but it, there has to be a mechanism to, to deter that, so that's all I got.
Right. Mayor Perdant Sandin.
Thank you. I, I feel that whatever modifications we make, I think having clear, something that's clear, something that's simple, something that's accessible, if we make those changes, I think, I think that those have been identified and thanks to the commission and the community that has brought some of these areas forward to us. So whatever, however we move forward, I think the simplification and getting clarity on the contribution limits is, is crucial. I think making it easier for people, for the candidates, for donors, for our staff, for the community to understand how you run, what it takes to run, we already have the layer of SPPC reporting requirements that are already there, that will, will be there regardless of what we do in the city and what kind of rules we have. For, for us, they're there, we have, that's, we have to follow those, but I think anything that moves us, again, forward, clarity, simplicity and accessibility, those, those are big concerns of mine and I think this, this kind of, this conversation will move us, move us there.
Thank you and I can't thank the commission enough even though I already did and in part, the commission's recommendations don't, they're not what I would have written on several of these subjects, I mean, they're, they're, I have a different point of view about some of these issues and different ideas, although I've also been involved in every, every revision to the Campaign Finance Ordinance since 1998, so, you know, the fact that it's not working, I'm willing to defer to the commission. And in part, I think that's important because there was, there's never going to be a process in which something as hotly contested as elections is going to result in some kumbaya moment where, you know, where these 10 people that are in this room at this meeting and these other 10 over here and, and as well as the other 54,990 people in the city all say, hey, that's the right answer. This is about the rules of an ongoing, never-ending set of campaign fights and so it's just a completely unrealistic expectation that there'll be some, some moment of profound consensus and it's the reason why the commission was intentionally composed of people who have not been involved in any, in any serious way in anybody's campaigns. And it's also why I'm prepared to support moving the whole thing moving forward, even though I don't totally agree with it because I'm also involved in those campaigns and this is a group of people who are skilled but also took the care and have the integrity to come up with solid recommendations. Now, that doesn't mean at the very end I would vote for every single one, I mean, this is where the public process begins, but I'm definitely supportive of taking the commission's work as they have provided it as the template for how we, how we move forward. Because look, the number one problem here is not inconvenience to candidates, it is, it is the issues that the commission could not address, which are independent expenditures and wealthy candidates supporting their own campaigns. That's the cancer at the heart of our elections, not someone getting a notice that their lawn sign is in the Caltrans right of way. That might be annoying, but no one's gone to jail for that, no one's gotten a fine for it, no one's been disqualified from serving in office, nobody's been otherwise punished. There's been no consequence for, for any of those, of any serious matter, while at the same time, organized interest groups, PACs and others have been spending 40, 50, 60,000 dollars when candidates are constrained by these contribution limits and they don't have to necessarily report where all that money came from or, or they often don't even report when it's spent. We have candidates who will spend 14, 15,000 dollars specifically not report it so that the bump doesn't happen, wait two months until they're caught by the city clerk and then during that entire period, no one else can raise the funding that they're entitled to under the law. So what we have, what we have is a system that, that can't, because of the Supreme Court decisions, cannot get to the most corrupt parts of our campaign finances and the parts that are warping our democracy to the maximum extent. It isn't the $500, it's not the $250, it's none of, those folks are not drowning out $100 donors or $50 donors, it is the $40,000, it's the $14,000 that is having that, that effect. We cannot address that in any direct sense through the, through, through these recommendations other than through whatever we can invent on enforcement and on transparency, which is exactly where the commission has gone. So I absolutely respect and concur with what our district attorney colleague has said about, about the specific notions around the district attorney piece being not, not a feasible option for sure, but I do think, you know, the alternatives, as she said, that are, that may be available internal to the city are certainly worth, are worth pursuing too because we, we have to get, have to get to that because we simultaneously have a system where no, there have been no consequences for violations and some candidates have taken, and interest groups have taken full advantage of that by completely ignoring them altogether, while at the same time, we have this weaponization of the complaints process harassing everyone else that's in, in, in campaigns. So there's a ton of investigations and complaints and reviews being, happening, none of which, other than one withdrawal by the district attorney, none of which have, no FPPC complaint has ever resulted in a, in a, in one, you know, in an action being taken by, no violation of our ordinance, no, no sign ordinance violation has ever resulted in anything happening. So we have an enormous amount of, of cost to candidates and to our system and to our democracy that's occurring with no benefit in terms of containing the behavior, the behavior and the corruption that these ordinance are intended to fix. So we have a crisis here and, and it's why the commission's work is so important and as I say, for me, to, from, from my own personal integrity, I'm supportive of moving this forward to the next stage where it would come back as an agenda item, you know, with these, with these recommendations that we then, we would have a full, a regular public hearing on, could consider adjustments, amendments, deletions, additions, whatever may come forward from the council but also from members of the public and proceed, proceed to take action. To me, that makes sense. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I share Mr. Vegas's point of view about the contribution limit and for many of the same reasons as Ms. Roscoe does as well, but I've lived under different limits and watched other cities, Davis has a $100 limit and they have even, they, you know, they have the same problems. So I'm, I'm less persuaded in that, in that domain because with, at a lower limit, you cannot compete with the, with the wealthy candidates and you cannot compete with the outside PACs at all because there, it's not as though there are that, there are a whole lot of $25 contributions that are happening today that are being drowned out by $300 contributions or $250 contributions, it is the, it is that, that large amount of funding. So, but I would encourage Mr. Vegas and our own team to, to, to think through these, some of these other options. I'm intrigued by the election voucher, or the campaign voucher idea, I don't know how or what it would get paid for, but, you know, we can, we can get to that, to that question as well, but other options that will, that would, that would encourage a broader range of people to be able to, through a match or some other system, to be able to contribute, I think is a good thing for our local democracy and to build that culture in the city. So I would encourage us to look at that as well, but I think the commission's overall recommendations, as I say, are at least worth moving, moving forward to a first reading consideration by the council. Mr. City Manager, do you have, what, do you have sufficient direction, do you want additional questions you need to ask us?
I think I'm hearing sufficient consensus from the council to come back with this item, we can, we can work it into our ordinance, our super city clerk over there has two meetings left.
Ah.
So I think time is of the essence there, so I think, coming back in, in March with a workshop slash first reading incorporating many of the recommendations, there were a couple that were noted that we have to take a closer look at for, you know, practical implementation, but, but yeah, I think that's, that's doable to come back with a, with the proposed ordinance.
All right. I'm certainly supportive, I mean, both for the city clerk reasons and also I think our intention even as we talked about at the meeting where we green lighted this for tonight's agenda is to try to move, not move deliberately but expeditiously so that we're not considering items like this in the midst of an election is really important for the integrity of the process as well. So the clerk's retirement date might provide the additional impetus in order to stay true to that, stay true to that faith. Is that, that sound correct?
Yeah, it's fair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks again to the commission and to folks who came, came to join us for tonight, but really appreciate your service and, and I guarantee you, no matter what we've said tonight, we're not, we're not contemplating asking you to serve for another year or making you permanent. You have discharged your duty with great honor and respect, thank you very much for your service. All right, item 16 is consideration of approval of a professional services contract with SP+ Corporation for Parking Operations at the Ziggurat Garage and consideration of adoption of Resolution 20-15 approving a budget amendment to the Parking Improvement Fund for fiscal year 2019-20.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a recommendation to approve a contract with SP+ to operate the Ziggurat Garage on behalf of the city and to adopt Resolution 2015 approving appropriation adjustments in the Parking Improvement Fund. For background, over 20 years ago, as part of a development agreement, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency contributed over two acres of land and committed tax increment towards construction of the Ziggurat Garage. towards construction of the Ziggurat Garage. In return, the city received several exclusive rights to the garage, including their right to operate it after hours. Approval of this SP Plus contract will enable the city to exercise this right. More importantly, after-hours operation of the Ziggurat Garage represents a significant step in the city's efforts to realize development in its waterfront, including in the Bridge District where we can finally begin to transition away from using prime, high-value parcels as interim parking lots and allow them to be developed on. Additionally, operation of the Ziggurat Garage will allow the city to support developments like the proposed River One Hotel and Residential Project. Overall, this is a great opportunity for the city on multiple fronts. With that, I conclude my short presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? You said it, but this is a really terrific development. Obviously, this has been in the works, and the groundwork was laid a long time ago. But it wasn't self-implementing. And so, it was a lot of hard work and advocacy and stubbornness by you and your colleagues and the staff and the management team in order to make this happen. But it's really going to be a tremendous benefit for both development in the district and for the mobility plans and everything else in the Bridge District and the Washington District.
I second that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the stuff, all the work you've done behind the scenes to get this done.
We have another presentation on this?
On this one?
Oh, okay. I still have some questions, sorry.
Mayor Fratim Sanz.
Okay, thanks. I was just wondering, because this relies a lot on Sutter Health Park, and it seems reliant, at least right now in this year, on their use. Could you tell us about how you went about having that happen and how confident you are on the estimates? Just because it seems like a lot of the revenue generation relates to use from their special events, or is it some of ours? I'm just trying to understand that more.
That's correct. The majority of the parking generator in the area is Sutter Hill Park. I would say that's probably about 90% of the parking activity over there for now. But with the River One project coming online, that could change a lot of things, especially if there's conferences there and there's increased activity at night, especially as the Washington District develops. Use could be different in the future.
Okay. And then, it looks like the budget amendments are in two kinds that are in front of us. One is related to the use of the structure, a set of them, and then a set of them looks like bump-ups of revenue expectations with permits, meter, fines. I just want to make sure I'm reading that correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, that's in regards to the Bridge District. You know, as you guys all know, it's been a huge success with the barn, with the residential project out there, so this reflects the increased activity out there.
Okay. Well, that's great. Thanks.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, and thank you for the work on this and the work of many others for decades now, right? Decades to kind of get this. I was joking with the mayor that I was actually working at the Ziggurat when this was constructed, and remember hearing from my friends who are in the Council, like, yeah, we're going to use some of those spots. And like, no, that never happened, but now it is. And so, this is really good work and well-needed as construction starts on the Calster's expansion, and which will have retail, some retail element on the first floor. What's happening directly across the street with the rebirth of the Treehouse Cafe. So, there's life in the Washington neighborhood that I think more than supports, more than Sutter Health Park, there's more coming. And so, this really plays into that. My question is, because we get access full-time of 28 spaces, but we get the first floor. How many stalls are in the first floor?
It's approximately 300.
300?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, that's, so for things that we go back to the Cycle-Cross events and all the other things that we do, this would be an opportunity for those type of events, secure parking and areas in the neighborhood.
Absolutely. For the Cycle-Cross, we would open up the entire garage, which is about 1,500 spaces.
Yeah. This is terrific. Okay. Thank you very much for your work.
Great. Yeah, I'm excited about it for the parking and also for the fact that it will now allow, it will accelerate the developability of so many of the parcels that are now just surface parking lots, and that's a terrific step forward. Given the housing crisis and everything else in our community and the region, it's really an important step, so great work. All right. So, is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the recommending.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma, and you haven't had one lately, right? It was seconded by Mayor Fratim Sanz. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed or turned down, motion carries. Item 17 is a presentation discussion of the status of the Storm Drainage and Stormwater Master Plan update. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Wendy Williams, Senior Civil Engineer here at the city, and I'm here again tonight to get more feedback on our first-ever citywide storm drainage and stormwater master plan. And that update is currently in progress. The Council heard prior updates on this project in August of 2017 and again in April of 2019, at which time you affirmed staff's recommendation to use the 2009 Yule County rainfall standards and to increase the low and medium density imperviousness values to 55% and 65% respectively, and opted not to pursue a hydromodification exemption at this time. This third time around, staff is requesting your input on the various types of projects that are available to mitigate predicted flooding from the 100-year 24-hour storm. We'll go to the next. We'll jump right into the various types of projects that are available to mitigate the predicted flooding. I've grouped this first set together because they have the same general characteristics and factors. Many of the suggested projects are pipe or culvert upsizings, which would include replacement of the existing pipe or the addition of a secondary pipe. Land acquisitions typically not an issue, as the roadways and channels typically have adequate space for the entire project. However, certain utilities may require relocation during the project. At least two suggested culvert projects are under non-city facilities, including the I-80 Freeway and the Union Pacific Railroad Main Line. There is one major channel widening that is recommended, and that is the channel which follows the north side of the Union Pacific Main Line and the Southern Pacific Main Line from Jefferson Boulevard all the way to Harbor Boulevard. For that widening, it does appear that there is adequate room for the expansion as well. Several pump station improvements are recommended. In some cases, the improvement might be a complete rebuilding of a pump station, which also may require some land acquisition. Other than that, the pump station projects are pretty straightforward. I mentioned both wet and dry detention basins in the staff report, and this slide shows you one example of each. Most of the city's current detention basins are wet basins. You may or may not have known that the Summerfield Park is a dry basin, used for flood control storage, but otherwise accommodates typical park uses within that basin area. Other than the detention basins being wet or dry, they may or may not require a pump station. Although most of the city's existing wet basins do include pump stations, we're currently not suggesting pump stations for any other recommended new detention basins. Secondly, in the North Basin, the majority of recommended detention basins are suggested as dry basins, especially where they would be located on parks or schools, or could be located on parks or schools. Once constructed, detention basins require relatively little ongoing maintenance, mostly mowing, occasional mowing, and some cleaning after large storm events. Many of the suggested basins will require land acquisition, especially in the North Basin where open space is limited. Ultimately, some of the land needed for detention basins may be vacant, or it may include site improvements, which would affect the land value at the time of acquisition. At this very preliminary stage, where we're just starting to define the necessary projects, it's critical to stress that the general locations for the basins that are shown on the modeling sheets are not meant to define specific acquisition parcels, nor preclude us from choosing other locations. Again, continued refinement of all project factors will eventually determine the ultimate basin locations. As noted on this slide, underground vaults are highly configurable, and they could be a good solution if the surface must remain usable at all times. However, underground vaults are expensive when compared to a detention basin, whether it is wet or dry. That being said, an underground vault may be a comparable trade-off when compared to land acquisition costs of significantly improved parcels. So, I want to point out some overarching considerations. First, all projects within each shed work together to drain the shed to prevent flooding. Therefore, changing one project will likely affect another. And as we narrow down the types and locations of contemplated projects, iterative modeling will be necessary to hone in on the most suitable combination of projects for each shed. Secondly, we need to be mindful of the order in which we construct drainage projects. The example given in the staff report is that increasing capacity of an upstream facility may actually overload the downstream facilities and cause flooding if those downstream facilities are not sized appropriately for those additional flows. So, projects should typically be completed from downstream to upstream to avoid making downstream conditions worse as a result. Lastly, not all drainage facilities are city-owned and maintained. The most significant point here is that all of these facilities, regardless of who owns or maintains them, are so intimately integrated into the overall system that if one facility doesn't work, it affects the entire system. Certain recommended improvements will be the responsibility of the city's drainage partners, and we will need to work closely with them as we refine the combination of projects and the order in which they should be constructed. This exhibit shows you the various drainage sheds for the North Basin, that's the area north of the Deepwater Ship Channel. As you can see, the Causeway and Racetrack Shed, which is that green area in the middle there, is the largest shed in the North Basin. And the RD-811 and RD-537 Shed, which is just north of that, the brown area north of that, is the second-largest. And given the sheer size of those two areas, it's understandable that the majority of the recommended projects in the North Basin are within those two sheds. And then, there's a couple of important projects that are also noted in the Deerwood and Lock Sheds, which are just south there and in the middle, the brown and yellow. A caveat here is that even though we don't list specific improvements for other sheds at this time, there may still be projects required in those other sheds. For instance, backup emergency power will be a recommendation for every pump station within the city. This exhibit represents the South Basin shed areas. In general, the South Basin's in fairly good shape, because the majority of the projects and the infrastructure is newer and has been planned the entire time through the South Basin Drainage Master Plan to meet the needs of development as it progresses. Several of the sheds include existing detention basins, and most of the sheds rely heavily on the main drain canal and its tributary ditches as the backbone trunk system to drain water away from the area. This is a condensed version of the table that's in the staff report, in which I combined the pipe and culvert upsizings and the channel expansion project. It's important to remember this is a very preliminary estimate of the suggested projects to mitigate flooding. It includes the most affordable options for each of the sheds, although that may not be the ultimate combination of projects chosen. Land acquisition costs have been estimated, but as we know, those costs can be highly variable as to exact location and current condition of the land and other factors. So, with this master plan, we are putting together a list of improvement projects to address the deficiencies in the system and/or support new development, and much like the list of improvements that are generated in a sewer or water master plan. But unlike the water and sewer master plans, there's no significant defined funding sources to do those projects. However, we will do a financing study to update the South Basin drainage master, drainage impact fees, to pay for certain future improvements, which will benefit the South Basin developments. That will be applicable to new developments only. Developments which already have a vesting map or are already under construction will likely not be subject to that new fee. The financing study will also look at the entire project list of improvements, other than those that will be paid for through the South Basin Development Impact Fees, and recommend some options to fund not only the improvements, but also ongoing O&amp;M. This slide does not mention, there's a small amount, which is currently budgeted, to pay for some drainage system O&amp;M and some other functions of our Environmental Services Division. However, that amount is a proverbial drop in the bucket compared to the anticipated value of the system upgrades, enhancements, and overall ongoing O&amp;M. We expect to get the financing study underway in the next few weeks, and staff will bring you updates on that effort as it progresses. So, this is just a summary list of some of the things that you could give us input on at this point. There would be any comments or concerns you might have about any of the various project types, including any preferences on detention basins versus underground vaults or anything of that nature. We also look for any initial comments or concerns about future funding, both for capital improvement and O&amp;M, but again, realizing that we will do that financing study and come back to you with some more work on that. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions for you that you might have before weighing in on any of these items.
All right. Councilmember Ledesma.
This is quickly becoming my favorite subject, I got to tell you, Wendy. But thank you. I don't know how, it's just fascinating to me, this tranche of infrastructure work or need that's here. And so, my questions are going to delve a little bit into sort of your analysis and sort of how you got to the projects. I'm also a little bit maybe direction for the financing plan, because I'm just, I'm still scratching my head, and I think you alluded to it, how are we going to pay for all this? And my first question goes with, goes to in characterizing, I don't want you to go back in slides, but in looking at the different basin shed relationships, right? And your first order of sort of how you organize them was, or what we need to think about is the iterative nature of this. So, this isn't like, I'm just trying, like, street improvements where there's 15 intersections around the city that we know are really critically bad, you know, street, these streets, bad sidewalks and streets, and you can just name them, circle them, and then we got, there's 15, we got a hit. And it's going to cost this amount. What you're opening my eyes to, the fact, well, if you improve this one, that's going to put stress on or impact another one downstream, literally. So, how do we, how do we, every other project, we can say, on the streets one, let's go tackle this one area where it's most critical. And I'm trying to note that, this didn't help me, I mean, maybe say the North Basin, but I'm trying to understand kind of what kind of what, what are, where is it we can point to, within there that breeds criticality? Like, if we don't fix these five ones, is there an area within there that we can say that we need to get to these?
Well, one of the things that you can do in still looking at the way that you should construct these projects, always start from the downstream end and work, work up. So you may not know what, what improvements you will need at the very upstream end of your shed, but you know that if you start at the, at the bottom end of the shed and work your way up, you'll do the iterative modeling as you go along and end up at the right decision. So if you did a detention basin project, for instance, at the downstream end, that will affect the upstream projects. The larger your detention basin, the less your upstream projects. So you do what you can as you go along, that'll come out as part of the financing study as well. We know that we'll never be able to fund this in five years, let alone 10. So it's going to be a long, drawn-out financing plan as well.
But even in that scenario, where are we pointing to that says, I mean, how, I mean, I could read through this, and you have some of them, the major storm drainage projects by type and shed in the graph. Are you saying that's where you want to start, some combination of those, and it is a starting point for us? And what I'm getting at is that, wouldn't the financing strategy say we want to, we are targeting this area for possible funding through, if there's a, which you're going to find out what the funding mechanism's for, right? Is there grant money for this type of infrastructure? You just can't point to it, and that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Right. And, and some of the points about, there's very little grant funding for a strictly drainage-related type of project. We get more traction on grant funding if we can pair our drainage project with, say, a park project. There's much more funding for that type of improvement. So to the extent that we can locate detention basins, say, on a, on a park, where we dig it out as a detention basin, but we also install park improvements on top of that, there may be some sources of grant funding for that type of project. Other than that, grant funding is few and far between.
And any other, I'm sorry, any other source, stream or availability from any federal state source is just not there?
We, we keep watching for it and looking for it, yes, but I, I think I've seen one in over 10 years of, of looking at the grants. That being said, again, the other point is it's, it's an overall city problem, but it's not necessarily a hundred percent a, a city infrastructure, city organizational problem. We have drainage partners, which we'll have to be working closely with as well. Our, our largest non-city partner is RD 900.
I think I know those people now.
Yeah, I think you do.
Well, and I think that's kind of what I'm getting at, is that, is, as we look towards those solutions, and you're kind of hitting upon it, is finding ways to prioritize, and maybe that's the wrong word, but you're hinting at it, is we're going to be pretty creative about how to upgrade it. And I'm going to go, go back to the, how would we characterize this as a flood risk? Or a, some other risk to, you know, I'm trying to get to the notion of criticality, that as we pursue funding, we can certainly say, this is an area that rates high in criticality. It's kind of a linchpin for two other basins if we work on this first, downstream, whatever, and then we could also find opportunities to work with it on a park's perspective or with RD 900, because we're trying to do these two other things. And I'm just trying to get a sense of the direction, that we just start to chip away and have a strategy in long-term? You're right, we're not going to, if we just take this approach that we have the map, and here's the basin, and here's the pump stations, and it's just, it's just daunting.
Right.
And it's just crazy to me that there's no funding source to help us with this sort of, but, but if we chunk it down to sort of as you're getting to, or I think you're alluding to, is sort of where we can leverage those existing opportunities. This is helpful, I think, that might be helpful in terms of our pursuit of that, and certainly help in trying to create, or at least bring attention to the need. You know, at the state level, at the federal level, I think of the work even we're doing at the Climate Commission, is rainfall may come more often as a result of climate change, that the opportunity to, as we talk about resiliency of communities, to create, to bring attention to this issue, that these are largely unfunded pieces of infrastructure that are needed. And the other lens I want to bring to this, too, is kind of the equity piece, is that, you know, if you think, is that making sure that the improvements go to where they're needed the most? And I think, not just from a criticality, but in neighborhoods where there's not adequate storm drainage system in those neighborhoods that haven't been for decades, think about that as well as part of that lens. And I think, I hope that helps a little bit, just sort of tighten the lens a little bit around how we might think about a long-term strategy and bringing it, and bringing it to the, into a way we can converse about it upstream to the federal level, the state level, about how we, how, and create it. Because this came into my mind, really, because of Climate Commission, thinking about resiliency. And this is just kind of, kind of thinking about if we're going to experience more rainfall over the next decades, we got to start thinking about this differently, too. So again, this is my feedback at this point.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
When I, thank you for the presentation. When I was thinking about this coming back to us, I, I kept coming up with questions that I would like answered, I think, as you're going through the next phase for us. I had things to myself, and I think, I think related to the orders, order matters, and that the implementation should be downstream to upstream. But I had written to myself, because this is all system and is related pieces and solution, what, what if happens when implementation is in pieces? Like, what if we could only do pieces? So I, I'm thinking, that, that's the kind of question I all want answered, what would that look like? What would phasing look like? If we could put together this much funding, what would that buy? Is it most important to fix older pieces of the system first? Like, you mentioned the redundancies. And then if we put an item before voters, like a new CFD or tax assessment, and it failed, what would we make from that? That folks don't want to have storm drainage, that we, you know, so I think we have to think through, there's a lot of questions still out, out there for, that we need to tackle. I think you, it definitely brought up issues about overall capacity and thinking about deficiencies in the system, but, but for me, I really, I don't think we're, we're going to end up with, be able to do everything. So what can we do, what's most important for us to do? For me, you've asked for, like, do we want a detention basin or a vault? For me, I want an effective system. So that, I guess that, that's the most important piece for me, or the most important piece of direction.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in looking at the magnitude of the work that needs to get done citywide, in my mind, I look at what, what are our priorities? Where can, you know, some flood damage and the loss of property, you know, the economy, lives, whatever, I mean, you know, displaced people, knowing that it's hard to find housing thereafter, and conditions that could be most severely impacted as a priority. That's, that's how I view it. And you did map out and provide some level of detail, but I have to look at each map. I'd have to kind of figure it out and piece it together.
Right.
If there's a way to kind of like categorically, I don't know, maybe put a nice big red, you know, danger zone here, then it might help me to say, okay, there's an area, and then from there, looking at what we can do, could we do a bike trail and maybe, you know, find something, other revenue source, so we can, we can decide, you know, what we can do with that area? For example, say, like you said, the parks have a combination, and then creatively match it with other revenue sources that we can possibly come together and, and find, same thing as Councilmember Sandin said there. And also, just very interesting information, all the detail that you provided here was very helpful in how you put it together. I probably want, you know, my own briefing on this, so that I can understand it better.
Sure.
There's a lot of information here.
There is.
And I appreciate all the work you've done to help us understand this. And I just want to be able to understand it better, like Councilmember Ledesma here seems to have a good grasp on this, and, but there's, 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 and then the schools. Seeing that there's a number of school sites here, I don't know, I'm like thinking, is that serious? I mean, where, how could that impact the school district and what's going on there? And are they aware of the discussion that we're having here that could impact what we have, what we decide here? I just want to see if there's that connection in the conversation. So just moving, and then the areas that, like you said, the 80 freeway, so there's just along with RD 900, which, you know, we can easily work on, other jurisdictions that we have to work with, so that we can achieve, is, could that be like the long-term plan? We can get started at some point, we're not going to be able to resolve it today, but maybe that's where that, we decide, you know, we'll, let's work on that, but we can't prioritize it because it's too much to establish at this point in time. So they're just some preliminary thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Roscoe.
I'm just going to be brief. This isn't my issue area, but I do agree, I, with Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Sandin, I, I agree that the system that we should subscribe to is the one that we can afford and the one that would work. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I will tell you, I am going to express my fascination with this whole detention basis situation, because I didn't know, that all this time I've been gallivanting around detention basins, and, so more detention basins, please, I'll lead the campaign for that, because it's, it's so multiple use. You could roll down the hill, you can play in the basin, you know, and collect floodwater. So that's all I have to say about that.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the, for the presentation. To me, the financing study, I need to see the financing study before I can offer too much useful feedback in this space, because I think the Mayor Protem is exactly right in terms of, you know, we've got to marry it together, because as we look at, you know, whether it's, you know, road repair and rehabilitation, you know, we've got like a $5 trillion need there, and, and on broadband, and on like every, every possible piece of infrastructure, not even counting, what we would like to do in terms of public safety compensation or other issues, that, like, every topic we look at, we could spend $100 million easily, including this one. And, and we can't, we don't, we don't, we don't have $100 million to spend on any of them or all of them put together. So we have to look at it in that, in that context. At the same time, the, your comments about the system are, you know, they are important, they are really important, because these elements connect to, they connect to one another. So the detention basin, which, which I like for the same reasons, and I think the feedback from the commissions has been similar in that space, but to the extent to which the detention basin has to get fed by a culvert and served by a pump station, and then the find, then you're, then the costs that you're grappling with, there's no longer a cost advantage to the detention basin when you look at the system that has to serve it. So I just, you know, that's why, it's why not just looking at one project at a time necessarily, we're going to have to finance the projects one, one at a time. So we need to have a strategy for, well, if we only have this much money at once, what will we do? But we do need to know what the system is that we're building towards. And realistic about it, there's, I mean, there, I, I, one of the reasons I'm hoping to see the financing studies, I'm not convinced that there is a lot of grant money, or a lot of partnerships that are going to solve this, that we're going to be faced with, like we are mostly, these are the topic areas, it's just a big problem and no money. And so we're going to have to figure out, how do we either get some money on our own, or figure out how to take small bites of the problem? And so I would just be, I, I, I'm not encouraging to go out and have lots of meetings with other stakeholders and coalitions and partners yet, until we know, like, what is the dimension of, of the, of the, of the challenge here? And who, yes, who might have resources, but let's wait till we, to talk to them, until we figure out who has that. So the park, you know, the park things are, are maybe a potential here in some places, but not all. I mean, keeping in mind, I think, when we think about detention bases, we're thinking mainly of the ones that we know, which are almost entirely, or they are entirely in Southport. And a detention basin is a more complicated land acquisition problem in Deerwood than it is in Yarborough.
Yes.
So we just have to remember that, yeah, okay, it would be great to have an enormous detention basin here and a park and everything around it, but it's, getting the land assembled for that is not so simple. And so I, I think part of, part of, for me, that I've had to realize is, like, to just move my, my psychology from thinking about what I know about storm drainage, which is mainly the facilities that we have built in Southport, and applying it now in the, in the, in the, in the rest of the city that has, faces a different set of constraints, and hopefully a different set of opportunities, but definitely a different set of constraints. So I've provided no feedback on any of your questions, but that's because I don't have, I think, I think we need the financing study to be, to be really useful in that space.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Mr. City Manager?
I just want to add, first, I want to thank Wendy and the team for all the work that's been going into this for quite a while. This is a, is sort of a new area, it's a critical piece of infrastructure, but it's not like, as Councilmember Ledesma said earlier, it's not like roads, where you look at the roads and you, you can assess the condition. This is a very complex system that has multiple parties involved, and so tonight, we wanted to start with this overview, just to provide some, some context for where we're going to go. And certainly, this is not the last stop of council on this. The financing will be coming next, but, but it's, it's something that we wanted to get on, an equal footing of information for the council, to be able to start to weigh priorities against other, other infrastructure. So that's all. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
All right, that brings us to Council Calendar. Ms. Berlin.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. An event that's coming up on Friday that is not on your calendar and your packet, at night, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., is the I Street Bridge Replacement Project Architectural Announcement, and that's going to be at Kaiser Downtown, 501 J Street. And then next week, February 27th, will be Coffee at Coffee with a Cop at Mod Pizza, and that's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's it.
Questions on the calendar? City Manager Report.
Nothing major, just hopefully you all liked the new AV system tonight, it was our first run. Hopefully you found the input button, I finally did, to switch from the PowerPoint to the computer, so it's, it's finally here, so welcome to 2020. That's all, thanks.
All right, City Attorney Report. Staff Director, members of the council, we have no future agenda item requests. Is there motion to adjourn? Moved by Mayor Protem Sandin, and seconded by...
Me.
Councilmember Roscoe, others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed during, no motion carries, meeting is adjourned.